Attorney or clerk, Mr. Rass.
Okay, I guess we've been updating, several things have been going on. One, do you want me to just concentrate on before we get to public work? So let me do that. All right, since the last meeting, I can tell you that in regards to the Fenimore facility, we have posted a landfill analysis results with attachments in regards to data sampling, tables of wells, attachment, a map with the location. We have been provided the stack monitoring report that was posted as well too from the DEP. We've also posted their latest update along with an addendum to the update clarifying some information in regards to the D Mr. And also monitored power source information as well too. Staff met with the Highlands Water Quality Subcommittee last week. Mr. Blood was in that meeting and he'll be providing a summary of the meeting in regards to recommendations for additional testing at the facility. And at that time, thanks, Chris. At that time, we provided the Highlands Council and their Subcommittee all the information in regards to the stream testing that has been conducted, the stream segment and basin testing that has been done in the area. We posted the last results from the April testing as well too on our website for anybody who would like to take a look at that. The Highlands Council in regards to that, one of the things that we asked is that they utilize grant funds, that if, I believe it's $35,000 available to the town, that we be allowed to utilize those grant funds for continued monitoring well testing, whether it's by a private firm or whomever. So we have access for that money for that. They're gonna put together something in two to three weeks and circulate it and get it back to everybody as to what their recommendations are. They've been meeting with the DEP as well, so they're gonna come back and their recommendations for additional testing as well. They have their staff, they have several environmental scientists on their staff along with the Subcommittee and their Council working on this. Rick, I appreciate you and Mr. Caputo going to that as well too. So I think we've put a lot of additional information on there, so for the public.
Mr. Caputo, anything?
Nothing.
Ms. Reid?
Okay, there's two, uh, three other items on item, three of us, I'm sorry.
Three of us.
I was gonna drink that, is that?
Oh, okay.
There's two, three other items on there. The item A and 8A is a historic advisory committee alternates. Mr. Buco issued an opinion that we can add alternates to that if we...
Change yours.
If we modify the ordinance and I propose that we do that and I need the Council to, yeah, you're ready?
You need a thought, this is way ahead of it.
We have to draft an ordinance first, won't we?
To draft an ordinance?
Yeah, just to move forward.
I will, I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Everyone favor?
Aye.
Item D is a block 40, Sunset, you need to go.
They say all 51 were moved up on drafting ordinance.
You did it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking.
Okay. Item B is block 40, Sunset Lane, June 13th, 2015 and Mayor Alhaf moved both B and C. Okay. I did ask the manager today, the police have looked into it, if they had any issues on that and they have not, so I don't see any reason why we can't report.
I didn't get to second.
Nobody seconded.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. De Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Zoschak?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burns?
Yes. Okay, now we can go to public voting. Is anyone from Republicans, anything that they wish to say? Mr. Wine?
Good evening, Dennis Wine, Sakasana. Page 32. You're spending $74,000 and change for lease car camera system. I presume this is for all the cars and storage and the whole shbang.
It's not all the cars, it's the five new cars, but it includes all of the computers, the storage and everything else, all the sundries necessary for the entire system to operate. It is being, we are utilizing highway safety grant monies for the program itself.
But you could hook up the existing cars if you were so inclined?
Once, correct. The system can be utilized by all of them.
It would have the capacity?
Yes.
Is there some reason they went with the car cameras as opposed to the body cameras, which I understand is an alternative?
Early, I believe during the Capitol program or the Capitol budget meetings, the chief presented both of those and it was consensus to go with the cars, right.
They only require the cars purchased issue.
Well, okay, you don't have to go back.
You don't have to.
But you can always do the body cameras too if you wanted to.
Yet that is correct. And this system, this storage and the rest of ancillary will work for body.
Work for that.
I believe we had to do the cars though.
Yeah.
Right, because I saw it here, the statute apparently had March 1st.
It's a twice statute, we haven't, we don't have the choices.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Chair? Yes. Lady Ingrid?
Kathy Hart, Summit Lane, Sakasana. At the last meeting, Chris, you said you would put on the website the Fenimore budget appropriations for next year. I didn't see it, I don't know if I missed it.
You, you have not, I just received those from Finance, I have not had a chance to post them. Tomorrow, Thursday, I'll be meeting with Lisa Spring in my regular weekly meeting and I'll be going over those with her and then we'll process it right after that.
So you can't tell me right now what we...
I'd have to go back to my office and take a look at.
Okay, because I saw there was legal of $525,000, I believe, and you told me that it would be under that heading, is that still?
It isn't, all of, all of the funds in regards to Fenimore are in the legal account. That does not mean that, that also includes funds for our environmental and also our monitoring system as well too.
Is it all under legal?
That's correct, that's where we put all of it, so we are not spending...
You will break it out though?
Yeah, we've done that before and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, so I thought maybe I missed it.
No.
And then also I saw that with the water testing, there was elevated benzene and arsenic and just wondering if anybody has thought to contact the EPA for any help with this issue, the issue of that?
That information has been forwarded to the ATSDR and one of the recommendations was that we do additional testing, which we, which is what our environmental consultant recommended as well too, which we posted his review as well.
If the EPA is a regulatory, they would have more authority, I would think, than the ATSDR, which just has, can consult or whatever.
Yeah.
Don't you think it would be prudent to contact the EPA, anybody?
You know, let me follow up, the last time we contacted the EPA, they kicked it back, but we'll follow up, we'll follow up with the DEP and ask, you know, that's who we...
We did, we did ask the NJDEP for additional information on this, as Chris mentioned, we contacted the ATSDR and we also had some opinions from Mr. Zelli, so, you know, we're starting.
I would think with these findings now, like, you know, concrete, and the one thing that I was reading about benzene is that it produces a sweet odor and I remember people saying that in the past, that, you know, sometimes an odor from the landfill, they couldn't identify what it was, but it was a sweet odor. So I'm wondering if you, if that's part of the air testing, that they're doing also the stack testing?
Well, we are putting all the stack testing results on as well too.
Could you find out if they are testing for that specifically or what exactly they are testing for, because...
We can ask. Well, you know what they're testing for, we put those on our, that's on our website.
I did see that though.
It is, it's on your weekly stack test.
And benzene is part of it?
I don't know that, I'm just saying that's what's their testing for is on the weekly stack test.
And then, it's just because of these findings that you know that benzene is a carcinogen and has anybody changed their opinion regarding capping the landfill as their best option here and would you revisit that opinion, anybody?
Well, one thing we definitely have to do is do a retest, I mean, that's the first thing, to validate these numbers.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, that has to go.
Right, but if that's, if these are held up, it's a really serious issue for this town. Elevated benzene, it's produced cancer clusters in many different areas close to it.
Detective Hart, no, someone else?
We're sufficiently concerned, Mrs. Hart, that we're gonna continue to pursue the benzene issue. I don't want you to walk away thinking, we're not, there are battery tests that are gonna be done, both to validate the benzene issue and then to determine how serious it is. So we're concerned that there's elevated levels of benzene and the Council wants to know what that means. What does it mean to the residents' health and safety and we're gonna find out.
And that's why I would say that enlisting the help of the EPA, I think would be the best move forward because they are the regulatory agency and above, the DEP is kind of complacent in all of this, that they are sort of one of the actors who produce this problem, so I think to continually trust them and not go above them, just as a consultation, just like, let's just get it out there. I don't understand what could hurt the town.
So it's a fair request and of course, we, you know, I'm gonna repeat what we've already said, the last time we went to the EPA, they referred that to the DEP, so we're going to, we're gonna do independent testing, so we get to the answer to the question, how serious a problem is this elevated benzene and what will it mean to the community? So if that means then going to the EPA, we'll follow it.
Yeah, because I feel like once you get new information, then it warrants another, another look by every agency that's possibly being involved.
Hi, Laurel Whitney, Seven Longfellow Drive in Sakasana. Thank you for getting all of those minutes done. Unfortunately, when it waits four years, the memory suffocated and to do five at a time, the memory suffocated even more. So I think that that's a good number to approve and whatever it is, you have to make sure it gets done. I mean, that's, there's a reason for the two week thing, why lock all memories...
It's being worked on as you speak.
Well, the recommendation I just heard was to only do five at a time. That, that's not gonna, that's not gonna solve the problem. So I think that this was an aggressive move and we should really make an effort to stick to, to getting that many done so we can catch up and actually be compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act. So that's my, my two cents about that. Again, back to the water, is it, is it possible that we can get like the township water expert or the township engineer, somebody who's really knowledgeable, that can really analyze these results and explain these results to us, to make a presentation within the next two or three meetings?
Yeah, we posted his report on the, on the website and...
But it's not a two-way dialogue?
Right, and one of the things he recommends is additional testing. And we've always said, we've always said when we get additional information, including information possibly from what the Highlands Council's talking about, then we can talk about getting all the information together and how it's presented. So I think that we're still along that path.
And you've mentioned in past meetings that homeowners can get their water tested at the township expense. How, what is that procedure? Do we bring you the water or do we get our own test and bring you the bill?
No, you call the Health Department and a lot of people, several dozen people have taken this up on this and they've all come out clean, but you can call the Health Department and they'll come out, send somebody out to do the test, because you have to do, it has to be done properly, so.
Okay, so there's no option for independent testing?
That is independent testing, we then send it to an independent laboratory.
And the way that, the reason it's done that way is so that it was a chain of custody, so that the person that draws the water certifies that this is the water I drew from this tap, it's then sealed, that is then documented and given to the laboratory and the laboratory receives that information, documents it, so that the information we get back, we can trace the water right from the tap back to the test results.
And does the information come to the homeowner or does it come to you?
I believe it goes to the home, to the Health Department and the homeowner. And that, yeah, so both parties would receive it.
Okay, and what's the turnaround time for something like that?
I don't know, it's relatively short. And again, a lot of...
Weeks, months?
No, a lot of people have availed themselves of that in the past, nobody recently, a lot of people in the past were doing that.
I will be.
You're on Longfellow?
Yes.
I believe you're on Township Water on Longfellow.
Well, it still comes from the wells, doesn't it?
We test that regularly, that's tested almost daily, okay, Township Water. We probably would not test that because this is a well test.
And one of the things that gives us some comfort is that in those tests that have been done of individual wells as well as our wells, we're not noticing that there's a problem right now. So that doesn't mean, there might not be a problem down the road.
That's not Roxbury Township Water, that's Roxbury Water.
That's right, New Roxbury Water Company, actually, yeah, a private company.
And they do test also?
And they have the same, same requirements that we do to test other organizations.
Question here, Chris.
Yes, question. Our water, Roxbury Township Water, those results of that year we tested, most of the tests we do are on our website, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And it's actually, I think we mailed to our customers.
You do, yes, correct, we do get a copy.
Yes, but I don't think yearly testing under these circumstances is sufficient.
Well, you have to.
I don't wanna be drinking bad water for a year until they test it, so.
Actually, their water, their wells are well, he said here.
I'm not gonna speak with Roxbury Water Company, but you'd have to call Roxbury Water Company or ours to, to the testing for that.
Okay, do you have one more question?
Yes, a lot of people said that there were two smokestacks running within the last two weeks.
Not that I'm aware of, there's only one stack.
People were saying that there were, I don't, I don't like...
I don't know what, yeah, I don't know, there's only one stack.
That's, that's what I thought, but everybody was saying they saw two.
I don't, nobody, nobody reported it to me, so, don't know.
Thank you.
Is anyone else, I didn't hear.
Good evening, Bob Schultz from Randolph. You said the Ledgewood Pond water testing was on the website?
The April, April was posted on, let me see.
I didn't see it on there, that's why I'm asking.
Bob, I think it was posted on the 12th, but I'll check on it, okay?
Was it under the Fenimore section or was it under like a subsection?
No, it's gonna be under Fenimore, it's gonna be under Fenimore section, okay. And actually, I had confirmed it, it was posted, so you may wanna look again, okay?
Do you know what the heading was otherwise?
No, I don't know, I don't know. If you, if you send me an email tomorrow, I'll send you the link to it.
Okay. For the, the well testing, do you know what they test for, that not, the township or the residence well testing? Do you know methods?
It's clean water, it's a clean water testing for private, for private portable well. So whatever the batteries are, we posted those before as well too, if you wanna look.
Do you know if they're, they're testing for one thing, for dioxin? Do you have any idea? I know it's a...
No, of all I do.
Well, that, that chemical, more than the benzene, is my concern because that 1.4 dioxin is very specific chemical, it's very carcinogen.
Whatever your VOCs are, you test for, but again, if you wanna send me an email...
And that's the one they found in a lot of those wells, but...
Okay, if you wanna send me an email, I'll, I'll pass it along to our folks, okay?
Yeah, it was in, it was in the Mazur report, which I thought was very good, it was very thorough, and I hope you guys go back to the DEP and do a follow-up with them to get that BOD and COD testing that, that Mazur recommended in his report, because that's very critical to know what is going on in there.
Yeah, I welcome that.
And I hope you support a motion to do so and get that testing done. But going back to the dioxin, that, that chemical is very specific to certain products and more worrisome to me, that's the same thing that they found in Coneville North, that's four months ago, because they started testing for that and that's why they're putting in public water for one resident, which is gonna cost the DEP a million dollars, it's because of that 1.4 dioxin, and they weren't testing for it back in, back in the day. And the concern is that Coneville South became a superfund site because of that, one of the reasons was one, because of that dioxin, because they found it in all the people's wells. And if we're not testing for it in the residence wells, you know, it could be in there, we don't know, so that's why I...
We don't know that, so let's, let's answer your question before we make final position, what, what they're testing for, what the standard is.
Yeah, what the standard is, that, that's really what's key. If they're testing for it and you're not finding it, awesome, I mean, that's great, but if they're not testing for it, really, somebody should go back because they're finding it in the ground monitoring wells on site, so the question is, is it going offsite? And that's the concern. And it's, one more question. Was there any update, I know there was an executive session about the lawsuit, Mr. Buco, and, and what was going on, there's some type of hearing or something going on at discovery at end of May and then June?
Just the, just the motion that was filed by S and P, there's been no change.
So that continues on, there was nothing, there was no postponing or anything, the discovery ends at, I think, end of May or something like that?
I'm sure there'll be, I'm sure there'll be an extension of the discovery, nothing has really happened, the cases are still, are still, the judge is still actually confused over the various cases that were consolidated and, you know, just the S and P's motion to reclaim possession of the landfill, which the township is not afforded to that, to that case, although we do anticipate an convening in that case to lend support to the DEP or dinner to control XO.
And if that case doesn't get postponed, I think the, the date of, the court date was in, in June 17th or...
I'll tell them, I don't recall exactly what the dates are, but I know that there is return dates for the DEP's motion papers, S and P will have a chance to respond and will have an opportunity to convene.
Is there a way to get those court dates on somehow on the website or to the residents? So we might be able to, if, if we get on.
I can certainly provide a question, you can put it on the website.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Alex, and I'm from Miami. So I was thinking, have we ever considered investing in a waste energy plant so we wouldn't have a...
You're talking to the Michael O'Leary, pardon me.
So I was thinking, have we ever considered investing in a waste energy facility, this way we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any landfill issues in the future?
You mean a solid waste disposal facility, will reduce gas or, that's the sort of thing you're talking about?
So, yeah, so how would we...
Actually, some years ago, Morris County, they wanted to put a facility in Morris County and it was voted against, that's when the, the trucks, the waste sites were formed here in the hava, the transfer stations, which will move our garbage, our garbage from here to landfills in Pennsylvania. The incinerator idea was put down for that reason, much like the smoking VOCs that would come out or something like that. Warren County has a facility, an incinerator, now they, I don't know if they produce power for it though. Mr. Zelli, we would like to ask for that, because they got us in charge up there.
So we don't do that because we ship our garbage out to other?
That's correct, Morris County ships it out to landfills in Pennsylvania, that's correct.
No, Mr. Morales, that's a really good question, and especially since you probably have heard some excellent progress in Europe, where the, the technology has gotten a lot better over the years, 20, 30 years. However, in Morris County, that county is responsible for solid waste disposal and they determine, so your, your question is probably better served if you went to the, to an MUA board meeting and brought it up to them and I could get you those board meetings if you wanna email me and send you contact information. And they are fully responsible for all solid waste within the county.
Politics has a lot to do with it.
Okay, that's really not our issue, this landfill should never have been reopened.
That's true.
Alex, I was kinda confused about that, but I could just research that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else on the radio, sir? Okay, we'll move on. Let's go back to item seven, reports of Council liaison representative, Council committee, and you, Mr. Buco.
It's Mr. Rush. I had the pleasure of going with Deputy Mayor. Mr. Abbey, you want it up, huh?
No, go ahead.
Good evening. Mr. Rass touched on this before and I would like to confirm that. I asked him off the record when we read break whether Ms. Hulse, Christine Hulse, was in...
Out.
Was in house.
That's correct.
Who did a great job in coordinating that Memorial Day service yesterday. She should be commended, you're absolutely right, sir, you really are. One other thing I'd like to bring up, don't be embarrassed, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but I want the Council to know this, and I think you probably all do, as a member of the senior organization of Roxbury Township, one of the senior clubs, we're called the Every Young Seniors, as a misnomer, we're seniors, just like all the others, all right? Mr. Zoschak and Mr. Burns is good enough to come down to our meeting, do you guys go to the other senior meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I think you guys know this, but they do a great service on behalf of retention. Yes, we have our monthly newsletter, what's happening, but beyond that, it's the information that both these gentlemen present too, are seniors. The seniors really like to know more than just what's in print about what's going on in town. They have an opportunity at this meeting to grill these two gentlemen when they're there. And they're good enough to answer most questions, ones that they couldn't, they say, get in touch with the township manager. But they really do a great job, so keep it up, guys. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, is anyone else for the public?
Can I ever tell you the point?
Yeah. Well, there's not too many of you tonight, so I'll give you a point.
Sort of was a weave. One question about the, the monitoring wells that were tested for the last test, I looked at the map that was online and they sort of, other than one, the, they looked sort of scattered in the same area and then one was a little further away. How were those chosen?
If you have that, a question like that, email it to me and I'll send it off to Ed Butler.
Okay, and do you know how, do you know how deep those wells are?
Same thing, you'd have to, send it off to Ed.
Okay, does it sort of look like a, a cluster that you would expect it to be, you know, one from here, one from here, one from here, and they were all in the same area?
Right, well, I'm sure they looked at hydrological studies and stuff like that, it's better served to ask them the question.
Okay, I'll email you tonight or tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I did find the, the Ledgewood Park, Park on testing on the website, but it's in like 36 parts under the Ledgewood Park testing, not, like, under Fenimore and then Ledgewood Park testing.
So it is on there.
So it's on there, yeah, it's like in 36 parts, it's like one page at a time, I don't know if you can scrunch it up into...
I just wanted to make sure it was on there because I was told it was on there, Bob, and so...
It was, but it doesn't come up in the Fenimore list, so we didn't know.
All right. I'm glad you went back and found it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's...
I'll check on that.
I don't know if there's some way you can, when you, I guess, because it's a sub-level, it doesn't come up in the list, most recent items, I don't know if you can add it to that somehow.
Let's see, what we can do, sir.
And I don't know if you looked through the, the stack testing, that one daily monitoring, I guess it was about a week worth of data in there, you know, you could see that the SO2, the H2S was at zero the entire time, the VOC was at one, I don't know, you know, I don't do air testing, so I don't know if that's just one, it's just really zero or somewhere between zero and one, but there was a period of time, for about six or eight hours, that it was six or seven parts per million that was coming out of the stack. I don't know if you, you know, what I would want is to know what is in that six or seven parts per million that's coming out of that stack, because a lot of VOCs are coming out of... parts per million that's coming out of that stack, except a lot of VOCs are coming out of that stack. And then, and to go back to the DEP and find out what, what's going on there. I know it was only a small period of time, but that's only one week's worth of data that you got. And for six hours out of that week, it was spewing out something that they detected. We don't, nobody knows what it is. And you have residents, residents that are very close to that area, and we know, you know, from the residents that are here and not here, some are very effective on this, so...
Bob, if you want to, you can either formulate your question and send it to me, and I can pass it along, or you can go to their Fenmore questions, one side, and ask them directly.
Send it to Ed, so, yeah. I just looked through the, through the data on there, so... And, and just going back to that one resolution in two thousand and fifteen, one fifty-eight, so that was all oil tanks in there, that was the soil remediation?
Yeah. Yeah, and oil tanks. And this is at the old DEP W?
Right, right.
Okay, I wanna make sure, yeah.
So there was many oil tanks in there?
I believe there was three. Three, it came up to be three, originally, I think they talked, there was two, and they came up down to three. Then we're, then we're...
Thanks.
Anyone else?
We can't hear you, Gary.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.[1735.86]